I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
She turned the heat on. She turned the heat on to her fault.
We feel like we're in a warming station.
Well, it was sixty-eight degrees or sixty-seven degrees.
Top of my head, gotcha.
Only seventy.
I think you burned a couple hairs.
It's seventy degrees.
Well, it may be seventy right here.
We did put in new light bulbs, so perhaps that's.
Those are very effective, whoever did that.
Seriously, we did.
We can have the others pulled out.
Yeah, correct.
One minute there, we've already lost quarter. Okay, I want to welcome you to the Rochester County Council 23rd, 2024 meeting. I assume everyone's had a chance to look over the previous meeting minutes.
Make a question to Ruth.
Second. Get that back. Amy Vroshin, Brian, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have no public hearing, so we'll start with the whole business. And Andy just passed out the draft of the possible ordinance to consider. Do you want to elaborate or discuss that any Andy?
Sure, I tried to break this down using ordinances that other communities have done. I added some things, my own, and I took away some of theirs. I didn't think they necessarily apply to us. I decided it made no sense as a new chapter, so I put it in as chapter 120. So that is not in the same chapter as a street solicitation, we talked about last time. But we do specifically, if you look at the very last page where the signatures are, this is designed to, this ordinance would create a new food truck chapter, but it would also go to the street solicitation chapter and drop in something that says, "Look, if you have a food truck permit, you do not also need a street solicitation." Just for clarity's sake. There are statements in here about the application process, about insurance. Some, I left more regulations about the signage on the truck than I thought we would use, but it's easier to cut it out than it is to recreate it. So if you think, it strikes you as a little too peculiar as to all those signage on the truck, I think it was probably Crawfordsville that liked to limit that, or Noblesville. One of the two had a lot of restrictions, so, okay. But essentially, it would require a permit being made through the clerk treasurer's office, and I, of course, could help develop that form. And this is designed so that upon meeting the basic requirements, the application, proof of insurance, and the fee, that the permit would be granted. So this is not the kind that is designed that every request for a food truck comes in front of Board of Public Works. Some communities do it like that. I just did it much the way the street solicitation works, whereas if they make the request, the clerk treasurer's office can decide, they check all the boxes, and they have the permit. Okay? There's also a clear exception in here for any special event that the Board of Public Works may grant. So if the Board of Public Works says, "Hey, we're going to give the Chili Cook-Off special event status," it can, doesn't have to, but it can say, "Well, none of those are going to require a food truck permit because they're all coming in for a day, and we've been doing that for a long time," you know, that kind of thing. So a special event can be a blanket exception to the requirements of this as well. The only, the other thing of note, exception-wise, is a nonprofit religious organization is, this is written so that they still need to get the permit, but they would not be charged a fee. So all of those, of course, are subject to change, but I thought we've kind of kicked it around, and it might help to have something on paper and you could make notes on and add that kind of thing.
The event application, I think I sent you at some point kind of a rough copy of what another community did, and that would kind of supersede this? If we had an event that we put out for Chili Cook-Off or Nickel Plate or something like that?
Yeah, if, the idea is if the Board of Public Works, if an organization comes and says, "We want to prove this as a special event," if they come to the Board of Public Works, Board of Public Works has the authority to say, "This is granted, and we're blocking off the streets," and they can, they don't have to, but they can say also, "Food permits won't be, food truck permits won't be required for this event."
Okay. So look this over. I assume if you have anything, you don't, you just think we need to cut out or add to, let Andy know directly? I do want to ask you guys, have you guys been looking at your council emails? Because I've tried to hit both the personal and the council, just to make sure I get the message out, know you haven't been looking.
I get emails that I don't get.
Okay. And same though.
I try.
I did, I promise.
Okay. I'll keep sending personal and council.
Yeah, I sent, I've been sending them both. Have you guys all get your board packets?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you've got, I mean, unless we have major changes to make to this between now and next month, we can consider voting on this maybe, or?
Can I have two questions real quick?
Sure.
One question. So, and this is just only for the, I think, I think you answered my question, but F under general.
Yes, F, okay.
So I'm assuming, because when I was thinking about the chamber stuff, because they do set up on Friday night often, or whatever, the night before. So that would, if they had the special exception from the Board of Works, then having those food trucks overnight would not be an issue.
Correct, the, but the special event could accept it, but.
Because I just thought about that. I don't know if it needs to have tagged out that says something along.
No, I think, just, just make sure that if the special event covers the period where they would park, I think that would be fine.
Yeah, because they do go overnight. And the other thing, I know that at some point, some of those ordinances had designated areas related to that. Did you, are we worried about that? The designated areas, like some of those ordinances showed maps, the ones that I had gotten from Amy showed some maps saying these were the preferred areas to have the food trucks in, or is that something of consequence?
Is that different than you showed me this morning on the door?
Yes, same thing, yeah.
The same thing?
I mean, the thing I showed you is where they suggested, when we met about the door, that they might think about food trucks. But then the other one was something I gave to Andy, which showed, which had like an amendment or an attachment or something that showed like a map.
I like the way they want community, who, after they had figured out the language they wanted in the permitting food truck ordinance, we just passed a separate ordinance that amended their parking schedule. And basically, we created a food truck vehicle parking prohibition in the parking schedule, which we're going to include anyway. So that one, we certainly can put it in here, but that also is an easier component to pull out and pass in a separate ordinance. Maybe, maybe we could sort this out first.
And then do that.
And then as we're doing that, and maybe Chief has some input where he really doesn't want to see them, and we could do that as an amendment to the parking schedule.
Because I understand the reason that they do that, or what I had understood from the emails, was that, so that's not a free-for-all, where food trucks are just everywhere. So some of the communities in Mississippi ordinances would say, "This is the preferred area, or this is the only area where it can be." I mean, you can be there with this food truck, but at whatever hours. But they had some sort of attachment that showed, you know, food truck friendly areas, food truck approved areas. So I don't know if that would be relevant for here, but.
Well, something had come up about parks, that there's an ordinance or resolution that says there's to be no mobile food type vendors in the parks.
As far as selling.
Right. So, I mean, will this override that? I mean, this doesn't say except for parks.
I think Amy's right. I haven't had a chance to read through it all, but I think we need specific designated areas laid out, and that could include.
Including the parks, yeah.
I think it would be, it would help with clarity's sake as far as just, you know, providing some sort of order so that you don't have food trucks.
Yeah.
And, you know, I mean, based on just a quick read of it, it could be almost anywhere. I'm not saying I don't want food trucks, I'm just saying that it might probably be orderly.
I think they need specific, need specific, and I think there has been some discussion down around the Times Theater, because there was a conversation with me about a permanent plug-in area there, and then one over where they typically park during the Nickel Plate along Eighth Street, right next to the Chamber Office. There's a permanent, we can get a permanent plug put in there. And then the comment was maybe behind Juretti's, that'd be maybe the third area. And then the other question would be, do we want to go ahead and put a spot out of Park, City Park, for certain events? So I think all those need to be probably included in this.
Yeah, and I have a map, Andy, that we were meeting about the door, that they, that some of the folks kind of shared some spots. One of them, Rick, was the spot where the sheriff's building was potentially having a receptacle there, I don't know.
That'd be a good one.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
I can add to that for the parks, too. That did come up today, because we had an issue a couple weeks ago with a vendor in a park. Did some research, and we don't, as far as I know, it's not a written policy. It's always been a policy of the park board not to have vendors in a park. But there's, as far as I can find, there's nothing written down. And I know at the last park board meeting, there was some conversation about allowing it for events, but not having just carte blanche access to the parks. I contacted Logan Sport today, and I talked to the Parks Director down there, how they handle it. They actually have a separate permit for the parks. They have a daily permit for events, and then they also have a season permit that allows them to operate in the parks all summer. So the park board has a meeting tomorrow afternoon. I was going to bring that up to them again, and then get some discussion started with them, how they want to handle that.
I'll let you kind of be the contact, was Andy on the park part of it?
Okay.
If you would.
Sure.
You want to continue on the door update?
Yeah. So this was an idea that Ruth brought up. It was hunted to me. So I attended the meeting that was required to be attended, which was, I think, in March for AIM, is that correct, Beth? There was a training that they wanted you to come to, to learn about special events, and the door as its new ordinance, new legislation, that I think was passed in 2023, and then, or 2022, and amended in 23, I believe. So after we did that, myself and Trent, Andy, and Uncorked, and the brewery sat down, because you have to have an anchor business to establish that. So we talked to the brewery, because brewery was just added in 2023 as an anchor establishment possibility. They were favorable with the idea of removing that subject, and so I put a small committee together with Ruth and a few other individuals to discuss, including Harry Webb from the Rochester Downtown Partnerships, to discuss possible locations, boundaries, ideas on times, purpose, et cetera. They were ranging related to the subject matter. Since then, in conversation, have had some suggestions on changes and some opinions related to the matter of hours, times, boundaries. So I have just kind of put that in the recess of my brain, just to keep that there, and to really help us, because it's a little bit, in my mind, more complicated than expected, just trying to make sure that everyone's needs are met. I reached out to, I found out about Logan Sport is doing a DORA as we speak. They've done the boundaries, they've chosen the times, they have their paperwork in the state. So I have spoken to the area plan director, Erin, there. Gotten all the information from her and paperwork that she's done, sent that to Andy. Hopefully he received it. Talked to Andy Schatz and asked him to attend our next meeting, which, the meeting of the steering committee, which would be in May, to discuss what we feel like from a safety perspective, and a realities perspective would work here. There are opportunities for up to seven different DORA areas, depending upon the need. The reason a DORA exists is because it provides the ability for individuals to free-flow in events if they do have an adult beverage. The other purpose is that for restaurants, like Ruth's or others, like Uncorked, it takes away the need to have fencing for outdoor seating, so it provides an opportunity for them to be able to have a bit more of a free flow for economic activity. So I feel like we have just a few more conversations to have, just to be able to make sure that we're meeting some concerns that were shared, related to not opening up the Pandora's Box for people just to walk around the downtown with adult beverages at any point, which is that, that's not the intention. But also to maybe provide some support. I don't know if you want to share your thoughts on.
On times?
No, just on the whole subject, yeah.
Well, you know, you can take, for example, just a Friday and Saturday night, right? So if somebody's at the brewery and wants to walk over to Ruthless, right? And they just ordered a beer, and they say, "Oh, let's go, let's go," and everybody wants to go, well, this dude has to chug, right? Chug the beer. Not, not really that great. So they have the right, then, to take it out. So how late do you want them to do that, on a Friday or Saturday night? And it should be the same on a Monday as it is on a Friday? And those are the questions that we need to answer. And, you know, I think allowing that, and then you have to consider, what are the other communities around us to do? Because if we, if we make our stipulations too strict, because we don't want them out on the street, because somebody might get hurt, "Oh, hey, I'm heading to Logan Sport instead of Rochester." And you know what, I'll even pay for a hotel in Logan Sport instead of party in Rochester tonight. So there's a lot of things to really consider, you know, because I'm the one there every Friday and Saturday night till midnight, one o'clock, knowing what people are doing, and knowing what they're doing when they're leaving my establishment and where they're going. And how often they go back and forth. I mean, I go back and forth, and it's nice, because you do cross people on the street, and it's fun. It really is. I mean, I go over to, I go over to the brewery, you know, and then I, I'm like, "Boy, you guys are empty." Yeah, they all went to Ruthless. Went past each other all the time on the street. It's nice, it's fun. So, you know, would that damage anything because somebody has a beer in their hand? You know? And that's, that's, so, so it's really interesting, and it does, in my opinion, create a nice, fun, community kind of thing.
And I think it's interesting, because obviously, there's different stakeholders related to this. The businesses are all in favor of it, of course, because this provides an economic boom for their business, right? Every person that sat there in the meeting that was a restaurant owner was in favor of it. Then you have other folks who are not in favor of it because of a safety issue, or because they are maybe just historically against adult beverages, and that's just something that they don't find to be comfortable to talk about. So I think there's many factors related to the subject matter that we have to really take into account. In my personal opinion, it's something that we should consider strategically, to ensure that we're meeting some expectations related to helping the businesses in the downtown, whether that be looking at potentially creating a DORA that would be for businesses for outdoor seating, and then a separate one for events. That's been a suggested afterthought that somebody came to me about, so that it's not just everybody walking the streets, because I think that was one of the concerns that was brought to my attention, people walking all the streets with adult beverages and causing chaos. Obviously, we don't, we would not prefer that, Andy wouldn't either. So just looking at, what does it look like to be responsible and strategic with this tool that the state has offered, to be able to help the restaurants and events in communities? I cannot lie when I say there were about 300 people that were at this meeting that I attended, who were all discussing the subject matter, all looking at, and at different levels, in providing this economic development tool for their communities. So as a point of reference, Forsall is in the process of doing this, Winer Lake has already done it, so that is passed. Logan Sport, like I said, is halfway through, willing to walk alongside with us, just to be able to discuss the details. I have thought that I might drive over to Logan Sport meeting here, and then just kind of sit down and share some additional questions or thoughts that you guys might have, or concerns that have popped up. So we'd love to hear your opinions. Maybe this is the second time you've heard it. The first time was when Ruth brought the subject matter up, and this might be the second time, and you may not have thought about it since then, but, yeah.
Well, you know, one thing is, is that when we discussed, you know, and I said, I said, "Keep people out of the alleys." So that would be, you know, keep people out of the alleys, because the alleys are bad enough anyway, you know, in the middle of the night. So if everybody was on the streets, you know, if the DORA area, then there was some reason why somebody said, "No, during certain times, the alley needs to be used." But that would be good to have different DORA, you know, during this event, this type of event. And yeah, the alleys are okay, but during these events, you know, during a regular Friday, Saturday night, no alleys.
Yeah, and so I think we're not going to solve that today. I thought there were some of the other thoughts, everybody just kind of being like, you're caught in headlines. I could like to.
But those are just different things that we need to discuss, and say, "Hey, yeah, these are good, and this will protect, and it'll also keep the eye on the people better, easier if you can, if you really make those boundaries where they need to be, instead of making them big and, and a free-for-all, you know."
It's going to be a lot of signage, it's going to be a lot of information sharing, a sat map that we have to come up with.
How many officers do we have on Friday or Saturday night? It just depends.
Typically, two.
And I think that's why Andy's going to be a part of that next conversation, because I think he needs to know and have the input and insight into what we choose, because the business owners have one strategic point, obviously.
I have made no comments either for or against.
Yeah.
So this, I just, I don't insinuate that I'm against this.
No, no, no.
I just want to be.
No, we're not saying that. It's just law enforcement, obviously, is going to be responsible for activity or out there. So I want, I'm not saying you're against it by any stretch, that's not what I'm insinuating. I'm just saying I want to hear your opinions, because that will be extra potential we need that we.
And I, yeah, I just want to be knowledgeable on the subject.
Yeah, and same on being, you know, from a law enforcement side of that, thinking about all the details, so.
Part of our. And I guess the other question I have is, is this something we do on a every-week basis, or just during, like, if we have a monthly second Saturday, first Friday, something like that, we only do it for those times? Any other questions that we need to?
Yeah, and those are all questions that have come up, you know? I think that that's one of the things of, when I was on the air and asking her, one of the suggestions that was made post the other meeting was, could we start small and see how this impacts the situation? And then if everybody uses it effectively, could we extend it a bit? Just give it like a, kind of like strategic.
That would probably be my suggestion, you know? We'll see, you know, expand it as we see it working.
Well, you know, one of the things Monica had said, she said, "Yeah, you know, I don't want people bringing somebody else's drink into the establishment," okay? And that makes total sense. So we have to have extra trash cans, and of course, the business needs to be responsible for the trash cans. And the thing is, is if they leave my establishment with a beer, and they're walking over to Monica's or Putz Bar, right? Well then, yeah, they're walking because their beer wasn't done, now I don't have to chug it, now I've been walking, have fun, dump it before I walk in. Two-fold reason. One is, is that now I know that they bought the beer at my place, and they're going to buy another one at Monica's, right? They're not going to stop at their car and fill it up, and then take it in, and then never spend any money.
So they can't, like, when you were talking about the brewery, the year, but.
Yes.
So you don't buy a beer at the brewery, then walk in and say, "It's your pleasure, drink the beer."
Right, right. And that was, because that was one of them.
You have to, you have to have a dumpster out front where I can throw, or jump, oh, okay.
Yeah, because then that way it's more of a.
What about bottles, or anything like that?
Well, no, it has to be.
It has to be in a cup, so the requirement is that there's a cup that they're required with some special DORA logo that says, you know.
Just so it's a plastic cup, yeah.
Is that an Indiana thing? Because I know in Florida, they said.
I don't know, I think it's a DORA thing, just because if they don't want, you know, glass on the streets and all of the things, that would be, you know, very much like a detriment to all of the things.
Because in Florida, it was just basically, it was the cheap 16-ounce, 16-ounce cup. You can carry that around all you want and go from location to location, but you can't walk out this establishment without that cup.
And, and. Like, there's rules, guys, that are, you know, out the wazoo for all the things that are related to who, what, when, where, how, why, what's acceptable. So I mean, that's stuff that Andy's obviously looking at, just to make sure. So I think they put a lot of thought into this opportunity. I don't know who suggested it to the legislature, but it was something that was supposed to be met for supporting downtown business. And so, yeah, so we're in the middle of the process, and I wanted to get any input or questions that I need.
Do you have a legislature meeting coming up?
Um, in May.
Okay.
So I wanted to share this, get any input, so I can answer any questions or original concerns that may happen. So when I go talk to Erin, I can go and, you know, ask those things.
There again, as you think about it and have concerns or questions, you can email Amy on that, or Andy, and Andy will be at the next steering committee meeting, maybe?
This Andy, for sure, hopefully.
I, I think so. I don't know if it's on my.
Well, I think as we have questions or whatever thoughts, take it their way. Hopefully, they can come kind of with a more refined package of a plan.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to rush this, just because I think there's a lot of things to think there, but.
Just keep us posted as we move forward on it.
Would you be willing to share that, the slides that you got done, Dora?
Yeah, would you guys be interested in seeing this? And I can send off, though, if it's of interest, just that ordinance that was passed to me from one of the other organizations, would that be published? Could you email them? Okay.
Any further discussion on that?
Is there any financial data?
It's very new, but I can ask the AIM representative, because they, I'm not sure that they, I know Logan Sport's looking at putting a budget together for how much it would cost for the receptacles, for sanitation, for signs. So I can ask Erin if there's a cost, if they have a budget put together.
Anything else? Okay, I looked at the responses I got from the mayor, if I were mayor, a word that we proved back in January. I don't have names, I just have applicant numbers. The first place winner was applicant four, second place was applicant three, and third place was applicant two. So I will forward that to the government teacher over at the high school.
Say that again.
But, four, three, two.
Four, three, two.
So we will have, I don't, I'm trying to remember, I've got it on my calendar somewhere, I think, the honors night at the high school, which I think occurs, will occur before our next city council meeting. So I may email you with those names once I get them, but we'll keep it. I just want to announce it that night, kind of, hopefully as a surprise. So we did have five applicants, which I was a little disappointed in, but I was told this week that there's some scholarships out there, nobody applies for us, but they're available, so it's kind of, I guess we can be happy with the five we got. Hopefully, we can expand on that next year. But it was informative to, I think, all of us to read those and see what the perspective is from the, from the students, and I think it should be a little bit informative to the government teacher, because I know a couple of them were kind of, hadn't really way outside our ability to make any changes on, you know, as far as.
Suit that.
Yeah, so, so they may be, and maybe with the combination of our majorities by the council that will get started next year, we'll be able to help educate the students on just exactly what city government looks like. So, so that's that. Stormwater fee discussion, does anybody have any comments? We're not going to do anything with that tonight, other than if anybody has any discussion on what Eric Walsh delivered to us last month, thoughts, concerns, obviously concerned with a rate, or a rate establishment, or a high initial establishment of a rate there. Does anybody have anything you want to discuss on that at all?
And you may not know, Duane, the, this keeps referring to this MS4 community.
Yes.
As like the communities that should do this specifically, but when I looked at the list, we weren't noted as MS4.
MS4 is a storm, is a designation for stormwater utilities.
Okay. So that would be people who already had done that? Okay, I wasn't sure, I was trying to. Okay, I wasn't sure, I was trying to read through this and understand, but.
We'll continue to look at that. Yeah, that's where we'll leave it right there. Any other old business? Okay, new business, Alicia.
Yes, hello. My topic is not as fun as fucking Saturday nights, but I am Alicia Sturgis, I am the executive director for Guardian Victims Incorporated, doing business as The West. We have a west and an east division. The west currently serves five counties, and we have been serving Fulton County since 2020. We are an adult guardianship program, very many of you familiar faces here. Mr. Odell, you are of course new, so just to give you a little history about our program, the Indiana Supreme Court wanted a program to help individuals who potentially had incapacitations in the state of Indiana and had no legal guardian per se, or power of attorney, or healthcare representative to help with those decisions that needed to be made on their behalf. So after gathering all their information, they created this VASIAP program, volunteer advocates for seniors and incapacitated adults. I'll get Beth a brochure that she can get to you for more information. But, so, we now serve as an organization fifty-two of the ninety-two counties in Indiana, and we continue to grow. We see significant referrals on almost a daily basis for individuals with incapacitations. My previous director is now retired, who came and presented to the council prior to me being here today, and so I, I've now assumed her position. The numbers in Rochester continue to stay pretty steady, which to me tells me that we need more spokes, spokesmen in the community to, to tell these businesses and these entities about our program and what services we do offer for guardianship, because we know that there are potentially many incapacitated individuals in all the counties that we serve. We do business with police, attorneys, facilities, long-term care facilities, group home providers, hospitals, the courthouse judges have reached out to us about obtaining guardianship, even for individuals who may have a discrepancy within family members, arguing over mom, you know, to be that intercessor for them. And Mr. Andy here, his law office, because we are a non-for-profit 501(c), we ask for pro bono representation when we petition for guardianship. So his law office has been such a blessing to us in representing us on the six cases that you see here today. So with that being said, in order to reach out to the community more about our program and our services, and considering we are a volunteer-based program, we have recently hired and trained Sandy Montgomery. She is going to be our outreach community coordinator, and she's going to be going into the community, reaching out to these entities and these different providers, giving them more information about our program, seeing if she can get more volunteers, because volunteers will be our hands and feet in the community, wants to be established, guardianships, and get these individuals established with the care and even the living situations that they need. That's my priority, that's my job, and then once it's all settled, we hire and train the volunteers to come in and be the advocate for these individuals. They are required by state law to do a one, once a month, visit with these individuals, but our volunteers that we have now, which is approximately sixteen, and we need a lot more, in our five counties are absolutely fabulous. They go above and beyond, out of kindness of their heart to advocate for these individuals. And we stay very, very side by side with them when they're advocating for these clients to make sure that they're getting the best care that they need. And our responsibility as a guardian is to make sure that we are bringing quality of life to these individuals. We see a lot of crazy situations, we've been in some pretty deplorable conditions and homes and stuff with individuals who have maybe had dementia, Alzheimer's, and just lost track of how to really function. So Sandy, once she gets her volunteers trained, then we would partner them with, with a client and, but I think as she's, she's trying to get the volunteers in providing this information, this will give the community the ability to see that they have a program that can serve them. And we're not, I mean, we do a lot of resource work too. We're all about least restrictive alternatives, so if a family member comes to us and says, hey, Grandma's not doing so well, but she still has some capacity, you know, we can guide them and direct them on how to become a power of attorney, or, you know, even if they just need outside resources such as Area Five, we can direct them in that way as well. So we're somewhat of a resource program as well. With that being said, so in 2020, I believe that the city council had, excuse me on my numbers, I believe they had contributed about twenty-five hundred, and then in 2021, we had asked for twenty-five hundred again, 2022, five thousand, and then last year, we asked for seventy-five hundred. And this is because our program is growing staff, volunteers, it's come a long way since 2020, believe it or not, but we want to grow it even more. And we only feel that it's fair that with the numbers that you see here on the eight percent being served for Fulton County, that we come to you today and ask that, not only for your, your continued support, but for a contribution for our program for 2025 in the amount of six thousand. So we actually have three entities right now in, in this community that supports our program, commissioners, city councils, and NICF. So, and again, with the help of Sandy, I think that we can broaden that to lessen it on everybody else, or you guys who are currently contributing, so.
Beth, you said, is that what, what did you say we did last year?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize they could send that kind of last year.
Yes.
Twenty-three or twenty-four?
For twenty, for twenty-four.
Twenty-five dollars. So this is for next year, twenty-five?
For twenty-five, yes. I'm here today, yep. And I can come back later in the year just to kind of give everybody a reminder and stuff. We just kind of wanted to get started earlier this year, because different counties, different timelines, so, and a new face, and a new face. So, yeah, and like I said, because we are, we've got Sandy now, and we're going to be growing in this community, we are asking for six thousand for next year instead.
Does each entity, so the NICF, the commissioners, and the council, Rochester City Council, all equally give six, is that?
That's what we ask for, yes, and that's what has been, everybody's kind of just followed the same pattern over the years, so with, with all of our counties, so yeah.
And that money goes towards providing the resources, or providing the staff?
The staff, and that's the thing about our program, is that we are very minimal staff. The Supreme Court's created it that way, so it's volunteer-based. We have currently, she's our half because she does do business for the east as well, so we currently, it's me and my case manager, there's two staff members on board, and we would love to hire another case manager, because, I mean, as the numbers continue to grow, we currently have, aside from this, it says zero for the pending cases, but we do have a couple of cases over at Life Care Center that she was looking on referrals for, and then one community referral from Marion Five. So they're there, just got to get there to get, it's a process, so getting the guardianships and everything.
Is it usually a guardianship, is it usually a guardianship because there's been a negligent activity, or is it a guardianship because somebody was voluntarily recognizing that that need happened and needed some support?
Right, so there's typically three standards, they have to be above the age of eighteen, they have to have a doctor's, physician's report showing some type of incapacitation, this is in order for us to obtain guardianship. So, and then without family or anybody to act in that role. Now, we get community referrals on individuals who may be showing or exhibiting, or maybe there may be some exploitation going on, family members per se may be exploiting these individuals for money, much like the Area Five referral, the gentleman's blind, so Area Five, when they go out and do their assessment on him, and they see the condition of his home, and his mental status, paranoid and delusional, and that would, those are two general indications that somebody may have an incapacitation. And so we follow up with the physicians to get those reports, and then, and then once we've got our documentation, and we do, we work almost as an APS as well, because we do the investigating of any potential family members, even out-of-state family members. We've ran across, one of our clients has ten brothers and sisters, I would have never guessed, and seven of them are out of state, but we got to make that contact with them to say, hey, do you want this position of being guardian over your loved one? And if they say no, then we have them sign a waiver, just giving us consent to proceed with it. And I mean, just, what are volunteers, I can't go back to that enough, what are volunteers do for these individuals to bring better quality and to advocate for them, it's just, I mean, I love doing a lot of it, so, this isn't my favorite part, but, I assume this position now, so I guess they don't have a choice, but yeah. Also, I did want to advise you, so, the Indiana Supreme Court, they do what's called a two-for-one match. So we apply for a grant in November every year with the VASIAP, it's I-C-O-S, I don't know if I'm the acronyms right, but, so we apply for a grant through them every November, and if you get thirty-five thousand in the communities, they'll, they'll contribute up to seventy-five thousand to your program. But we were told that 2025 is when their funding was established for, whenever they created the budget for this program, so they may not have money next year. And the last two years, we've, we've only seen fifty thousand of that seventy-five thousand, and to be honest, I don't know that we'll ever get back up to that seventy-five thousand, so, and they strongly, strongly encourage us to get community support for this program, so.
So Beth, this is in the budget, I assume, because we've done it in the past, or, you know?
I don't know where it would be in the budget, I mean, it's.
But it's been done in the past.
There's a dollar amount, it doesn't break out of each individual one.
As I recall. I think you talked about it, but I don't think you put it in.
There's a line item that has a large number, but there's several entities that are part of that, so.
Right, I think Linda typically had identified edit funds, does that make sense?
I, I don't remember.
Yeah, we gave twenty-five hundred the last year, and I'm trying to think what, what fund that did come out of. Last, last year's, what year?
I'm kind of confused.
Twenty-five.
I think it's seventy-five.
We've always given twenty-five. Barbara. She said she was your boss, she was not was your, she'd asked and she'd not guess.
I got shot, I was late.
Oh, you did.
She was a dollar man.
Twenty-five.
It's a bit of an invoice.
Yes.
And I know, you said we paid it, you know, in January, but I didn't, that number's not ringing its bell, but that doesn't mean it's not there. We do have, we do have these things in the budget, it's just they got broken out, and there's like five or six, seven, eight groups that we give money to, so.
Right, twenty-five hundred, I remember, that was for something else, I don't.
Did you say that you've got five in 2022?
I believe so. So this is, this is where my numbers are coming from, and I'll pull it up real quick, but our budget, our expected budget is two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand a year. Nowhere do we ever meet that. I mean, I think last year, we got out with a hundred-and-twenty thousand. And so when you have, I have my executive director, or excuse me, my CEO, and then now we have a community outreach, yes, it is for, but it is for employee budgets, but it's also for, if any of our clients needed anything, we're not going to say, oh, you're just crap out of luck now, you know, we would use our budget money to furnish that for the individuals. So we put it back into the community and we bust our butts, let me tell you. Even though we're serving six in the county right now, it's, there's some tough, some tough kids we've got, some intellectual disabilities and then some with dementia, so, I call them kids, they're not kids, but they're lovely kids. Let me see real quick. So with that being said, on the eight percent that we're currently serving, if you take from a two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar budget, that's eighteen thousand four hundred dollars for Fulton County out of that eight percent. So if the three donors all gave about six grand apiece, that would meet that eighteen-thousand-dollar expectation, so. I do want to confirm for you though, how much was given last year? Give me just one second, please. Is there other ways?
I thought it was five thousand.
I just thought it was four-hundred-and-thirty-three.
That's what we gave last year.
Five thousand, yeah, that's what I thought.
Was it five thousand? Okay.
That's what I thought the number was, it wasn't seven-five hundred.
I think you're right, I think you're right, because, and again, I apologize, I'm new to this and coming in on this, and we were going to request the seventy-five hundred for this year, so, but with only having served the eight percent, we're asking for the six thousand, so.
Well, we gave five last year, you're sure of that? Okay.
Yes. Thank you, thank you. Yep.
Oh, that's okay, I, I'm trying to, I thought that was the number. I just completely blew it.
No, no, thank you, yeah.
Yes, yes, we've already gave a twenty-two.
Right, yes.
Yeah, right, we should say like. We don't really have to vote on this today.
As you guys grow, as you guys grow, then how, how do you intend on funding this stuff? Well, that's it, is that as more people become familiar with our program, providers and entities, we can then request funding from them, so it's not all on the commissioners or NICF or city councils. So that's our, that's our goal, that's our hope, is to get out there and communicate that. And then we even thought about doing drives and stuff for funding and events for funding and stuff, so.
Do you ever get families to contribute? Like you said, you may have a family member that kind of ditched their people.
Yeah.
Do you ever get help from them?
No, they're taking their money.
We have, we have, we do have an endowment that we would like to get that ball on the roll. I mean, there's, it's not, you have to have big funders for stuff like that, so we're looking at sustainability. Huh? How many years have you been, has this been? This, we have been serving, it started in Tipton County seven years ago. Okay. And then came to Howard and Cass, six, and then, so we're going on our fifth year for Fulton and Miami.
So this is for 2025, you said, you did it tomorrow night, so let's just think about the table next month?
Yeah, actually, we should probably wait till the budget time.
Yeah, yeah.
Last year, last year we, excuse me, but last year it was all voted on in September, after the budget.
Oh, I get it.
Perfect.
I was just curious, I read the paper that sometime law enforcement calls somebody for four counties when you have, have you ever called this agency for help in particular?
I did one time.
Okay.
And I think by that time, that individual had gotten to Indianapolis maybe, and gotten the care that he had needed, it was a homeless individual, I believe, so, yeah. So, but we, like, again, we're resourced, you know, we do our investigating just as much as APS, or if there's four counties being called for somebody who's incapacitated, they can always give us a call.
Do you get calls from four counties as well?
We have, yeah, we actually have a couple. We actually have a couple, and Cass County, we have a couple of their clients, so.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you an email, just so you know. I'm an invite here, so we have a, I have a nonprofit, and we provide opportunities for people to share about their different resources. So, I will send you a invitation and connect you with the person that can, that sets up those presentations.
That's great.
Just so you can, so I, so I can learn a bit more.
Well, that would be great, yeah. And we're all about, like, I mean, like I said, we're, we wanna get out there. We want the communities to know who we are. We want, um, not only, you know, the providers and stuff, but even family members who don't know where to go or what to turn to. So, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
Maybe Beth's lead, if we can remember that in September, once we're in the new budget, because I think we'll come out in next year's budget.
And I can touch base with her and come back if you guys would like to, to even update. Hopefully, we have more clients and volunteers. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for coming up. You came from Kokamore, right?
Huh?
You come from Kokamore?
I, I, we actually, I have an office in Galveston.
Okay.
So, yes.
All right, next item is, and I'm gonna, Christina, um, I'm gonna kind of tell what I know as our conversation went through. You're requesting an exception to our ordinance a little bit. You're wanting, you've got three dogs.
I have three dogs. I have Ghost, who's an all-white pit bull. He has heterochromatic eyes, so he's one-hundred percent deaf. And then he has his best friend Buster, who is just my little mutt. And he just turned five. And then we have Mei Mei, who's a German Shepherd puppy that my step-sister gave us in December. And then I have five male cats.
And these are all, the cats are inside, outside, or?
No, they are all inside, they do not go outside at all.
And the, the ordinance ninety-two, in ninety-two dot total two, letter G says, the ordinance reads, no more than three dogs, and no more than five total animals per household. Uh, it's my understanding, we've made exceptions to this the fastest, especially when the cats are not feral.
No, they're not feral, they're all...
They're gonna be inside.
They are, and they're bonded to my dogs.
So, we're gonna have a long discussion about this. I mean, I personally don't see a problem with it. Does anybody have a problem with that, make an exception? We had a permit drawn out of case, we approved it for her to, to do this. What's the thoughts? Any concerns?
I mean, they're all inside.
They're all inside, when my dogs go outside, they are tied up. Because we were told by Animal Control previously that that was something that had happened, because our yard isn't fenced. They don't leave my yard unless I'm with them and they're on a leash. My dogs are all vetted in Iowa, because Ghost is deaf. He's used to his vet out in Iowa. So, we just take them there for the dogs, um, because Buster and Ghost know them. That's who they know.
You live in city limits?
I do, I live at fourteen-oh-eight Audubon.
My, my question would be if it's, and again, I'm not, if they're all indoors, how do we know about this?
We don't.
Because she's decent enough to come and ask?
She's still identifying.
My daughters turned me into Animal Control for having more animals than is allowed in city limits. And Animal Control told me to request a permit to have more animals than is allowed inside city limits. I was told specifically by Animal Control last week to request the permit.
So, if, if they're violating, they have to come to the council and basically request permission to exceed the maximum number of animals.
And this was a complaint from, well...
You never had a complaint, did you?
Oh, yes. Yeah, they, we were turned in for having too many animals.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
How about, so, by your family?
By my daughters who live out in Iowa.
So, it wasn't a nuisance issue? It was just that somebody knew that you had more than what the rules said, and then they said, decided to...
See, I would really like to say what's really on my mind.
You are on camera. You're on camera, like, so. Has Animal Control been in your establishment and said, there's no problem?
The previous Animal Control Officer, Randy, Mike, somebody, that guy, that guy was in my house multiple times when we first moved here, because we were turned in for having too many animals. We then took a bunch of them back to Iowa to try to keep it, like, and he knew at that point, we actually had six cats and two dogs. We took one of the cats back to Iowa to live on my animalist farm, and then we got him to drop. There's my step-sister, Brian.
And you're not, you're not selling them or breeding them?
I'm not breeding them, I'm not selling them.
So, what if one passes away, what's the plan? Are you gonna replace them all, or just?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
It just kind of happened?
Yeah, um, my husband...
Cats pick me.
It's not even a fake story. My husband, um, one, two, three of the cats actually came with us from Iowa as rescues. Snow, um, when I worked at the gas station in Iowa when we lived there, he was just hanging around outside the gas station, and my husband, like, picked him up, put him in the truck, and said, look, you're coming home with me.
The animal shelter always needs volunteers.
I am happy to do that. I am happy to volunteer out there.
It sounds like you're just, I mean, it, it sounds like these are all such your fur babies.
They are, they are, and my, yeah, um...
Is that my cat?
My husband refers to them as his babies. He had a cardiac event last Wednesday. And when I finally got to Fort Wayne to be with him, the first thing he said was, are the babies okay? Because my, my pit bull could see him outside, because he had his event outside in our yard where my pit bull could see him. And although he couldn't hear what was going on, he could see the firefighters, and he could see the ambulance drivers, and he could see, you know, the sheriff's officers, guys. And he was just really not having, like, he was going from one window to the other window and, like, trying to figure out where Dad was. But what's going on? Why is Dad, why is Dad on this big structure?
And Andy, there's been no calls related to...
I'll make a motion to approve the...
I, I mean, who's in the animal control?
Who did this?
We're gonna vote. Motion, all voters, say aye.
Aye.
Here's your, here's your permit.
Thank you.
What else are requested? Okay.
Thank you.
Beth, you wanna handle the ordinance and the resolution?
Okay, here we go.
Okay. Last month, there was a little bit of confusion on the resolution regarding the golf and pool discounts. And, um, Andy wrote up a more formal resolution that we had cast. And he advised that we probably need to have Brian sign that. But in the next one, on Resolution oh-eight, we're actually amending that, because there was a lot of feedback and confusion as to who was actually eligible for these passes. So, we're amending the Section Two, Item J, for the golf and pool discounts, that all full-time and permanent part-time city employees and full-time elected officials may receive free swimming pool and/or golf membership. Water Board members, Board of Public Works and Safety, and Park Board members may receive a fifty percent discount. The Tree Board and the Redevelopment Commission are not part of that. And the reason is, since it's a taxable benefit, and we withhold the taxes from what is paid to the board members, they're not paid, they're, they're volunteers. So, um, we had to eliminate those. And there was a lot of pushback on the fact that the water, the board members were getting a hundred percent, and, you know, with the golf course and receipts and all that, that we thought fifty percent would be a better percentage. So, that is, that one is the one that I'm presenting to be passed as a final one.
I'll take the E for that. I was thinking, genderize the IRS issue came up on the non-paid or non-stipend positions, which is also something I'd like to consider for next year. We do have a Redevelopment Commission, if it's in a lot of time, as much time as any other board. Same way with the Tree Board, and they don't get paid a thing, or get any stipend whatsoever. So, I would like to just piece in thought about doing something with them for next year. But, um, I, I'm in agreement with this after finding out what we found out since. So, uh, I suggest we pass this.
So, avoid the original one?
Yeah.
No, it's just men's, and Brian will have to sign it, and then this one, then men's.
Oh, so he signs it, and then it's men's.
Yeah, and then he'll sign this one as well.
Do we have a motion to approve that?
One reading?
Oh.
You don't have to do it, it's a, it's a resolution, it's not an ordinance.
Right, we have to have one reading for a resolution?
Yeah.
We don't?
You don't have to.
No, I think...
You just refer to it in the minutes.
Yeah. And Brian is the one that needs to sign it, so.
So, Brian, pitch water, raise your motion.
In a second.
Don't worry about it.
Very interesting. Say it all, just say it. Next one.
Okay. The next one is a resolution regarding the AIM Insurance Trust, that we're changing medical and dental and vision coverage to the AIM Medical Trust from our current ones. And so, this is just a resolution for them that they are requiring that, seeing that the city council has approved our changing carriers. So, that's what this one is.
I assume this is a savings?
Yes, it's like ninety thousand a year.
Is the coverage comparable?
Yes, it's exactly in coverage, and it's actually better.
It have better coverage for those who choose to bring their spouses or families on board, so.
That was the reason we were looking into it. And then the benefit also was that it was cheaper. But we were trying to do something for the employees with their spouses and families, so.
This is something that the department heads were all involved in the discussions, and it was there, I mean, I heard the comment, this is a no-brainer, so.
Thank you, Beth.
Well, it was, actually, the department heads are the ones that spearheaded it, but...
And I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution nine-twenty-twenty-four.
I'll second.
Been moving the second, all voters, say aye. Okay, next.
Okay, finally, the Water Board passed some rate increases. Hang on a second, my paper's...
Talking about hookup fees?
Pardon?
Talking about hookup fees?
Yeah, that, um...
They weren't increasing, they were actually...
Right, and it was like, how much it was costing to go out after hours for...
There was some increase on after-hour work, but we had a hookup fee that needed to be more fairly adjusted, tap fees, tap fees.
Yeah.
And road cut fees and so forth, yeah, so.
I have them all here, but anyway. For some reason, I do not have those on here. What do you say, do right here? Sorry, the tap fees, like you was talking about, changed. It was five thousand, we're changing it to eighteen hundred, because, so it's more in line with other communities. And then there's the additional road cut fee and the boring fee. The five thousand used to include it all, so people that did not need those services were paying it.
Right, and when we looked at it, and thankfully, we had a resident citizen call in and complain about it very kindly, I might add. So, we looked at it, Derek and I spent quite a bit of time looking at it. There was an eighteen hundred base, and there's a five hundred, what's I called a, I lost the term, special, it's all, has to do with the size of the line running, and it's adjustable for businesses and so forth. But really, the bottom, the cheapest tap fee would be about twenty-three hundred by the time you add those two together. Then it goes up from there, depending on whether we decide the road from the main or only have to have a road cut and a war fee. And it could actually get up to five thousand, you have to have all those things. But the way it was, everybody was paying five thousand, whether they needed a road cut or not, and I didn't think that was fair. So, we made some adjustments to that to try and get it more in line with other communities, cover our costs, and, um, only charge as needed for those extra costs. So, that's, that's the basis. Plus, we, because of wage increases, we increased the after-hours, holidays, Sunday calls, and so forth. So, we feel like we have a very fair plan in place now. So, I ask you to...
This one has to be read.
I'd make the motion to accept that, because...
Everybody's here, so we can do one reading.
The Water Board, I was sitting there, I was there with family, there was going on. And I know what's been going on, I've been on the Water Board all years, and I've been in the council, and I'd make the motion to accept this ordinance.
I'll second it.
Okay, we do have, this one has, okay. But you want to have one reading?
Title only, yeah, I say?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we got two of them here, so we're just talking about ten right now, right?
Right, mhm.
Ordinance number ten dash twenty-twenty-four. Boom.
Second, second.
We'll vote.
Is that it, then? That was it?
First reading.
No, it's the first reading.
Okay, but don't we only have one reading?
It's an ordinance.
I know, but you only have the one reading, but everybody's here, isn't it?
No, no.
No, no, no.
The everybody's here rule allows us to...
Pass it in one, one evening.
Raise it and pass it in one evening.
Got it. Sorry.
I'll make the motion, read it in title, second, reading in title only.
One second.
All right, ordinance number ten dash twenty-twenty-four.
That's a very easy title.
Re-discussed, and I'll make the motion, we'll read it for the third and final time. Can title only?
Ordinance number ten dash twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, now we vote, right?
I'll make the motion, we adopt ordinance ten dash twenty-twenty-four.
I'll second.
All voters, say aye.
Aye.
And ordinance eleven dash twenty-twenty-four is what we also discussed, so.
And that one, we, we just added the part in bold that says, service charge we made for turnoffs after business hours and Saturdays, and service charge of a hundred dollars we made for turnoffs on Sundays and holidays, because that, those are outside the hours. And then, on disconnection of service, we raised the, um, one fee from, I think, fifty to seventy-five, and the, um, hundred-and-twenty-five, if they had been shut off one time previous, it used to be a hundred, and now two-hundred-and-fifty, and I forget what that one was, but, the Water Board decided that those are more fair rates to be charged for those kind of things.
I'll make the motion for the first reading of ordinance eleven twenty-twenty-four by title only.
I'll second.
All voters, say aye.
Aye. Ordinance number eleven dash twenty-twenty-four, and ordinance amending ordinance ten dash twenty-twenty-one in various sections of Chapter fifty-two of the Rochester City Code.
Make a motion, we'll read it the same time, but title only?
I second.
All voters, say aye.
Aye. Ordinance number eleven dash twenty-twenty-four, and ordinance amending ordinance ten dash twenty-twenty-one in various sections of Chapter fifty-two of the Rochester City Code.
I'll make the motion for the third reading, but title only?
I'll second.
All voters, say aye.
Aye. Ordinance number eleven dash twenty-twenty-four, and ordinance amending ordinance ten dash twenty-twenty-one in various sections of Chapter fifty-two of the Rochester City Code. Make a motion for the adoption of ordinance eleven dash twenty-twenty-four.
I'll second.
All voters, say aye.
Aye.
Did you get all that, Beth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, any other new business? Okay, Chief Butler.
Good evening. For the month of March, structural fires, one in the city, mutual aids, one in the town, two in Henry Township, one in Abenabi Township. That's fun to say, Abenabi. Idle fire alarms, two in the city, one in Rochester Township, one in Ridgeland Township. Rush fires, three in Newcastle Township, one in Ridgeland, two in Rochester Township. Accidents, two in the city, three in Rochester Township. Medical assists, nineteen in the city, eighteen, I'm sorry, eight in Rochester Township, one in Newcastle Township. Gas leak, one in Rochester Township. Gas spill, one in the city, CO checks, one in the city, one in Ridgeland Township. Service calls, three in the city. Service calls, three in the city, canceled calls, one in Henry Township. That should add up to 56 and we conduct a one-nighted training. We had 11 applicants turned in. We will conduct written and physical tests May 4th and then we'll bring the candidates to the Board of Works for selection. Also too, the contract for the new pumper tanker was awarded to Spencer Fire, had the contract signed by Beth, I will get that up to them. We're looking at a two-year turnaround time for this, so with the non-reverting truck replacement fund that we established years ago and the low-end fund, this will be a cash transaction for the city. Pending your questions, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Thank you. Andy?
You have my report. If you have any questions about the numbers, let me know. Other than that, we've got the baseball parade this Friday evening, softball parade is Saturday morning. Matt Campbell's retirement party is this Friday from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM here at the council chambers. I invite any of you, if you want to show up and express your appreciation to him, I would appreciate it. I assume everyone knows Matt is retired from the police department and is accepting our systems administrative position that you allowed me to create last year at budget We are bringing back police in the park, it's going to be on June 22nd this year, and then we have applicant testing scheduled for this Saturday morning. However, we have no applications turned in yet. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
There will be, Matt and Andy recorded a radio segment this morning, will be played Thursday morning during the training post, so if you will listen to the good conversation they had with Randy Nguyen, both of them, so tune into that. I think there's something else that's going to happen. And he's going to be, have a month's vacation to have a break there, right?
Yeah, so his last day isn't until actually May 5th, but this is his last week here. Next week he's going to be on a training and then they're asked to get 30 days separation before we can rehire him back since he's leaving the city and being rehired by the city.
Okay, Andy, what time on Friday is the parade?
Two to five. Which parade? Oh, the 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
That leaves City Hall.
Yeah, so they're going to be out of here by 5:00 and then they're going to line up here and the parade leaves here at 6:00.
And the parade on Saturday, where does that leave, where does that start?
Saturday morning, it starts at 9, 9th Street, the RTC, behind Centennial Park.
That's where it starts.
And we'll leave there and come down Main Street 4.
And what time is that you said?
9:00 AM.
Okay.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Glenn?
Good evening. April 1st, we started bulk leaf pickup again for the spring, that will continue on through the end of April and starting in May, then we'll revert back to bag pickup for the rest of the season until fall. We have installed the engine brake ordinance signs around the different entrances into town, so that was just completed this week. And then tomorrow, on Madison Street where Putz's building is, we are going to be moving the barricades out into Madison Street, cutting it down to one lane because of the concern of trying to contain that wall if it should fail. So we'll be doing that tomorrow. We'll have a barricade up on the one end to try to highlight the fact that that lane is closed. And then there's some no parking signs going up on the east side of the street to ensure that we don't have any cars blocking that. And that will be tomorrow. And that's all I have, if you have any questions.
Okay, next, Brian. Thank you.
I thought I'd let Brian make the report tonight.
I was happy to see you come out, but I might have to.
By that long.
It's been a long day. The stellar program still goes on, we're putting that together. The housing study is at a point where we're looking at developers and actual locations to start building. We've got three developers who have been in touch with me last, not last night, the night before. I got a fourth one who's very interested in discussing what they can do, so I'm hoping that we can have multiple projects going all at once. We'll see what happens at that point. The other thing is, I attended a ready-to meeting today, we are in negotiations. We were told to apply for $80 million, we were awarded $35 million. Nobody in the state got all of it. The Four Corners and Indianapolis got $45 million. We got 35 and so we are cutting $45 million. And I can tell you that the meeting today was pretty tense. I'm happy to say that Culcomoh, Miami County and Howard County took a beating, but I suspect as negotiations continue, we will see some of that come to us as well. At this point, I don't want to go into any details because everything's going to change, it's all in flux at this point in time. So the last one is that there's Eli Lilly money out there and I have put in $250,000 request for the Putz building specifically for restoration. And then I have also put in for a $2.5 million low-interest revolving loan fund for structural repairs only for the entire county. At this point, we would run that through BizCo right now, the way it's set up. And so that's kind of where we're sitting right now. It's general, I know, but everything's in flux, so, but in good flux, so.
Do you have any idea when the, when the ready-to decision's got to be completed, Mike? When do they have to come to a?
The state's going to come in on May 29. And the bad part about this is that the state can throw our projects out and say we would rather you do these instead of these. I don't think they'll do that, to be honest, Bob. But truthfully, nobody's going to get out of this without getting the hit. I expect us to get hit somehow, I don't know where. I will say this much, it will be more on the industrial park side than it will be with Little Zebby's. The state themselves elevated that project, childcare is critical. And some information I got a couple nights ago from Jana Vance just proved how important that, that project actually is. Nobody touched it today, we did discuss the industrial park. I promise you between now and we have another meeting on May 9th, we'll be in negotiations over the phone and that's why I say I really don't want to go into detail because I know, and you know it too, it's all going to change. It's just going to be what we can limit on everybody.
In the mail.
But I prefer downstate take the beating, not us.
We do have a backup plan on the industrial park, we put an application April 1st for, through Commonwealth, it's a federal grant, I believe, that we anticipated not getting funding to ready-to, so we do have a backup plan that looks like it's got real good possibilities of helping us get some infrastructure out in that area. So we're still working with landowner, Cronberg family, to try and work out the details of an option so we can get more acres out there. Next, are you done, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, redevelopment commission, there's a lot going on, I mean there's a lot. Do you want to know more about what's going on? We have a meeting tomorrow at 8:30 here. So largely discussed Putz, I know, Andy, did you have your meeting today? Was there a meeting today?
There wasn't a meeting today, but there's been some poor communication.
Okay, so we're constantly in communication, finding out, I'm still waiting on hard numbers from the contractor to know how we're proceeding. As you know, that building was suggested or said it was going to be handed to us, I don't know how to word it otherwise. Gift wrapped and given in this, we have to deal with it, put it that way. So we're working on dealing with it in a very quick and matter-of-fact manner. So the other thing, we do, I did have some raises this week on the property east of the hotels, talked with the owner of the properties, looks like we're going to be able to accomplish, at least at this point, he's very much in favor of, was working with him on extending that road, McDonald Drive over Old 31. So we're still working through some logistics on that, so that's a, that's a big, big plus. So, and so far everybody's been open to all the ideas of making that our street. We think Walmart's going to be in favor of having access on that side as well. We're trying to get ourselves in position to get a CCMG grant by next, early next year for the finished work of paving and redoing that whole street as well as the paving going on out to Old 31. So I don't see, right now I don't see any obstacles in our way of getting that done. So that's just a couple things. We got some other things to talk about, but I'm not going to talk about them tonight. So, Hartboard, Bob?
They met on April 8th, I did not attend that meeting, I went to the final four, so I missed it, but it looks like they had a lot of good things. They're still discussing the various beach projects at Lakeside, beach that we have and they're also, must be still talking about the moose. Wayne gave a detailed report about the parks, that they're, it's like they're getting ready for the year. More about the pool, trying to get it going, as well as swim lessons. Summer parks reported, sounds like they have, looks like they have currently 75 kids enrolled at that date. I'm sure they probably have some more by now because I think they've done some parking since then. And they talked about doing a five-year plan, some more, must have interviewed another party there. And looks like they had some other discussion with Police Chief Schatz as far as about the Pink Pavilion.
That was police in the park.
Okay, and very active group. They did, they didn't say when they adjourned, but I don't think they probably meet their three-hour.
It was like 9:5.
They did.
Eight.
No. There was only two.
Yeah, there were two.
There was only two. Any other, anything else?
No, I don't know if you guys.
Really, well, Amy, do you have something? Sorry, I passed over, do you have something?
I was just waiting for you.
No, I just go right over.
Nope, that's okay. I was trying to get numbers from Janet, but I did not. For the animal adoption center had its event sprinkling, from what I understand, there was a large, I was the grunt work to take down the tables, but from what I understand, they had a large group of people come in for donations, so that's good, that's up at the museum. And then area plan commission, last time Dwayne put my report together, but this time I know a little bit more because I actually read it. So basically, we mostly approved a zoning change on property from highway commercial to suburban residential. I'm getting the terminology. And then we'll be discussing other ordinances such as solar and potentially EV coming up. So it's very interesting, I'm learning a lot.
Good. Mark, you have anything on the council briefing?
Yeah, BZA meeting for this month is canceled as there was no business to transact. Council on Aging met yesterday. Just a few notes, the council, I think you all know, does tax returns for folks that need some help and they, they did almost 100 tax returns this year, which is really, really good. The bus trip to Maine that is happening in September is completely sold out, so there are no availability there. The golf outing for council has been set for June 8th, that's at the Elks. And the Council on Aging is hosting an open house on Friday, June 28th, from 11:00 to 4:00. Everybody would certainly be invited to that. We have received notice, the Council on Aging has been selected as member of the month for the month of June by the chamber. And they have hired a part-time driver, they have been down a driver on medical leave and so trips, they still did over 2,000 trips in the month of March, but they did hire a new part-time driver. Any questions? That's my report.
Ruth, you got any?
You know, I'm kind of failing on this new date and time. I'm always having to cook, I'm sorry.
So nothing to report?
Nothing.
I was there and there's still nothing to report.
Yeah, okay.
Treeboard?
Treeboard, man, they sent out, compiled everything for the next, the spring pre-and removal list. They sent out the bids to various companies, we'll see who responds.
I did.
About it.
Okay. Waterboard?
Well, covered, covered about everything, I was looking and seeing through my nuts here as to what else that we could have missed and really the only thing was that we didn't get in the ordinances that we passed was, it proves the two-year-old checks for a total of $562.98. And actually that is a normal ritual that they, every, every year there's two-year-old checks, checks that they pick up and go and that's basically it, besides what we had earlier.
We did, we did approve, I'm trying to remember the terminology, they did approve that was a 50 or 60,000 for the steady, remember the lead.
The service lines.
The service lines.
Wasn't it engineering?
Engineering with Commonwealth.
Yes, they did, yes they did.
So, anything you want to add on that?
No, no, thanks, bud. It had that, it had that, so yeah.
Yeah, okay. Rick, any good news?
Well, not really good news, I guess, but ambulance, of course, we're still working with that. We met with Parkview a week and a half ago, one-on-one to make sure they was interested, they are. So we're in contract negotiations, we're supposed to see a contract by the end of the week, or the end of next week, I should say. So hopefully that moves along good. Press with Parkview, they are in the community, you know, they got the helicopter, they've got, working with Woodlawn Hospital, they've got ambulance service in Silver Lake, North Manchester, so they do got some around us and hopefully it goes good. Another deal we got, Amy, opioid money, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, there's an opioid settlement comes, we get an 18-year settlement and actually the city's, comes to the county because it, how small it was or whatever, their portion comes, well I know Amy has contacted me, I gave her a book to study, she's been doing her homework, trying to figure out what programs fit that, because there's restricted funds and there's unrestricted funds. So I talked to her today on a, on Beaman Home, I believe it was, they're, they're going to get a plan together and, you know, come to us, I'd like you guys to be involved in it too because you guys got some stake in it, so we'll see how that turns out, if everything goes okay, if it meets all the guidelines or whatever, but there is some money there. So then I suppose everybody knows that, oh, no, I better not say that. She'll find out. I forgot I can't.
Well, this is nice.
Yeah.
It's a little late.
Not that, it's recorded.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you after the meeting when it's all.
It's a surprise.
It's a surprise.
Okay, anything else we need to cover?
You guys probably know what I'm talking about.
Andy, you got anything else we need to look at or ADA concerns? Beth, we have on our list.
No.
All right. We'll adjourn. Been moving the second, all the papers say aye. We got some ordinance.
Thanks, Brian.
We all.
Signing something.
I forgot.
All right. Res, I'm sorry.
I thought, I was going to.
There's an email.
They know about it, I think.
I'm going to start hearing, we're down the line.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
No, probably.
Is it back?